Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 14th, 2023 Meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I would just like to ask everyone in the audience to take a moment. Please silence their cellphone. Please note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. They've asked me to make one announcement to everyone out there. Due to Comcast channel lineup changes beginning on September 21st, FCTV Government Channel 15 is moving to Channel 9. For additional viewing options, please go to www.fctv.org. I'll take a moment, like to introduce the members of the board. Starting at my far right or the audience's left is Jerry Patanis. He is an associate member. Moving across to the audience's right is Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Next is Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm currently serving as the board's chair. Next is Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk. And finally, we have Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. Our vice chairman, Scott Peterson, is not with us this evening. He is traveling I do with business. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow for a full and fair discussion on a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. That include an opinion in favor or opposition or to ask a specific question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the records. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board shall then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote of three to two is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. First up on the agenda this evening is public comment. This public comment is for any project that is not... Excuse me, any public comment for anything that is not specifically listed on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public have a public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda? Sir, come to the podium.
Will you tell us what's on the agenda?
That's a good question. Do you want me some extras? Do we have some extra agendas? Apologies to the audience members. Thank you, Orion. What I'll do is I'll circulate at the end of the public hearings... Excuse me, new hearings. If anyone who is still here has a public comment that is not anything specifically on the agenda, I'll allow a comment at that point. Next up, we have continuations. We have non-scheduled this evening. Getting into new hearings, we're going to take one out of order. 07123 Kula, DeAngelo of Nine Sycamore Street, T-Ticket. We have a request for withdrawal. I believe their representative is present. An email was requested... An email was sent to the board requesting that this particular application be withdrawn. How would the board like to proceed on the request? Motion to continue?
No.
Withdraw, sorry.
Without prejudice.
Second to Mr. Fineran. Any board discussion on the matter? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The application is withdrawn without prejudice. If there's anyone here who is here looking to see the hearing of Nine Sycamore Street and T-Ticket, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice. Next up, we have 06823 Martin/Cross, Zero Stowers Street, Lot 202, T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to construct a single-family dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
So tonight, we have Jessica and Kate Martin... Jessica, Kate Martin, one name, and Neil Whiting Cross, 31 Leland Street, Jamaica Plain, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240, 1138, parentheses, "for the Code of Falmouth to construct a single-family dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as Zero Stowers Street, Lot 202, and T-Ticket, Mass." And then we have from the town boards. The assessors have no comment. Fire department, no comment. Water department, a water line must be shown on the site plan and a water service application must be completed and submitted to the Falmouth DPW if town water is desired. Planning has no comment. Engineering has comments. Let's see. We have this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights-of-way and public utilities. Stowers Street is a public right-of-way in this area. Alterations to the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. It isn't clear if the proposed driveway is five feet from the property line. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. Quotations, "The application shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit," end of quote. Number two, "Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department." Three, "The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters of public rights-of-way." Four, "Drywells are proposed for the roof as we typically recommend." Five, "Engineering will assign an address to this lot when we sign off on the building permit. The number can either be 49, 51, or 53. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Fixing of legible numbers required, and there is a time limit for compliance." Number six, "Erosion controls are shown on the plan but do not appear to be adequate to protect abutting properties in the public right-of-way. A construction entrance and limit of work on the abutter sides are missing. When the project requires a driveway permit, DPW Engineering will require additional construction erosion controls as part of the permit. We defer to the board if the plan should be revised prior to their approval. We recommend the following condition be included. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the Engineering Division page of the town's website." And I have no letters of support or opposition.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joe Clancy, appearing for the applicant for Greg Clancy Construction. The applicant's Jessica Martin, Neil Cross, approved our representation before the board on July 18th... Excuse me, July 14th. As part of our analysis for the presentation, we did a lot coverage analysis, which I think is included in our package. Interesting enough, as I looked at all the lot coverages, they averaged about 15%. We're requesting 21.2%. A little bit of the history of the site. The site was created in 1950 as a typical lot in Maravista. Originally, it had 8,737 square feet. At some point in time, there was a dispute on Chestnut Street, and there was a claim on the rear end of the lot. And it actually was adjudicated by the Supreme Court, and 1,344 feet was awarded to an abutter on the neighboring street. So that's how this lot became 7,310 square feet. The Martin and Crosses went to Clancy Construction and desired to have a home built in Falmouth. They want a multi-generational house where they seek four bedrooms. This site is on the Maravista sewer, the Little Pond Sewer. There are no wetlands, and we are beyond the 100-foot buffer, and we're not in the flood zone. So we're not asking for any variances other than simply the lot coverage that shows up in our application. The dwelling is going to be two and a half stories, 2,613 square feet. It'll be two and a half stories. The plan is that there will be two bedrooms on the first floor with a den, one car garage, and an open porch. The middle floor will have the majority of the living area, kitchen, living, dining, another bedroom, a bathroom, and an open deck. The top floor, a half-story, will have a primary bedroom, a bathroom, an office, and another deck. The height of the house from median grade is about 33 and a half. So we are not asking for any variance to get above the height restriction. So we comply with that. As we go along, the lot is rectangular in shape. It has 75 feet of road frontage, and so we're not going to create any shadow effects between any of the abutters. It just so happens, the site has a driveway on one side for number 57 and another driveway on 45. So the house is about 26 by 47 deep, so it's a rectangle. We exceeded the 20% lot coverage because we wanted to obtain stairways to get up to the second-floor decks. We believe there'll be no adverse impact of vistas or views on Stowers Street. And as I said earlier, we're going to tie into the Little Pond sewer system, so there will be no nitrogen that will be going into the embayment. We feel that's a real positive thing for the house. The house was designed by Brian Foley, who's here with me, and Greg Clancy, the principal of Clancy Construction. As I said, the family desired a multi-generational house, and they feel that with parents occupying the first floor and everybody occupying the middle floor with a kitchen, dining, and whatever, and primary bedroom on the top floor. It's a contemporary design. It'll have a shed roof. It will be aesthetically pleasing, and there's hope for the future on the shed roof to be able to put in solar panels and get some solar energy for the house. I think Brian has a couple of comments about the site plan as it relates to what engineering had mentioned about the water line.
Yeah. Brian Foley, Clancy Construction. Were the comments in regards to the first submitted site plan or after the comments were made and we resubmitted with the new?
The water line comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, let's see if I can find it.
We do have the water line connection and a...
It just says it must be shown on the site plan.
Okay. We did submit a new...
Application?
Yes.
A water service application shall be completed and submitted to the Falmouth DPW.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Typically, what we do is, as we get your approval, then we start the permit process. We'll seek, as the DPW has said, pick a house number and get right into permitting for the... Well, it's a town road. We need to get a driveway permit, and we'll be off and running for a building permit. So those are all on our list of things to accomplish in order to get a building permit. Anything else, Brian?
Nope. So I should have announced the beginning of this hearing. I'm going to report you, Scott, being absent, I'll point Tony on this hearing, but we'll start with board questions. I'll start with you, Jerry.
So solar is proposed. It's not going to come right now. I'm not even sure we have jurisdiction, but I think if they put something on in the future, they might have to come back to us. Because it's... I hope not, but...
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Well, the zoning can't really restrict solar.
Good, okay.
Anything else, Jerry?
No.
Frank?
No, it's pretty straightforward. I think I understand it.
Mark?
I think Frank said it for me.
I have no questions at this time, Suzanne.
Why are we calling it two and a half story when it's three?
As the code states, the half-story has to be 50% or under of the floor below, which it is. So the third floor is 50% of the second floor.
What are the... Do you know the square footages?
The third floor is 1148, and the third floor is 574.
Second floor is 11. Second floor is 1148, and the top floor, 574. So it's under the 50%.
Square foot.
I'm going to come back to that issue. Tony?
What did you say the structure coverage is on the lot? 21 point...
21.2.
In total coverage?
Yes, sir.
That's total coverage?
No. Structure.
Total is 32.6.
I don't have many questions, but what I am concerned with on this style of houses in this community, this neighborhood, it's very, very different. I'm not sure it rises to the occasion of substantially detrimental to the community because it's a very... It's a good-looking design, but it definitely does not fit in with the rest of the community. But that's all I'm going to say at this point in time. Leave it at that.
When I first came to Falmouth, I lived on Stowers Street, and I lived in one of the older houses. I rented it for winter, and I can tell you, it was decidedly old. As I looked at my lot coverage calculations, a lot of the houses that are on Stowers Street are very old. And as you can see with lower Maravista, there's been an awful lot of revitalization, renewal, knockdowns, new builds. So the nature of Maravista has changed significantly in keeping with today's tastes and also building codes. The desire in the marketplace is to have a contemporary look. And the applicants, that was their dream, and Brian has put that into play.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Testimony was the ridge height's going to be 33.5 feet?
The height, sir?
Yes. Ridge height?
Yes, 33 and a half.
And your third floor is exactly at 50% of the second floor?
That's right, sir. Yes.
Any additional follow-up questions from the board? Public comment. Does anyone have a... Ma'am, just come up, please, and identify yourself.
I'm sorry, my English is not that good. It's my daughter going to come. She should have come today, but she is, you know, she's sick today, and she cannot come today. So I just came here, and I thought it's all the neighbors come, and I was shocked. I was alone, and I didn't... I don't nearly know what happens during that time. And I live next door, and so it's, you know, it's a... The side of it's like the next neighbor is three floors. And I should maybe hire some lawyer or somebody to represent me, so I cannot do right now. But I didn't know it's what happens. So my neighbor, they call me even, you know, months or two weeks or something. They're going to all come here, but I cannot see. So I should know it's what happens. You know, it's a... So all neighbor is like a single floor or a second floor. Then, and suddenly, you know, it's a three-storied house. And I don't know. So I have to, you know, discuss someone to represent me, you know. So please let me, you know, time to give someone to talk.
Where do you live in relationship to the house?
I live 45, right next door.
You're right next door?
Yes. How suppose the house owner, they're going to sell this... I mean, this land? I'm next door. So I... Right now, I'm second house. But if this house, I'm going to be third. But it's, I'm second floor, just like any other neighbor. I'm... We are okay. But this house certainly is three floors. And I don't know what happens. Nobody here today. I don't know. You know, so I don't live here. You know, it's during the summertime. My daughter was... She was there. She spoke with the next neighbor. And so also, you know, my husband is sick, so I didn't really that much. You know, so she's not here. So I keep calling, and I cannot... She's... You know, I don't know. She's sick. So I have to know what happened during the, you know, that time. And so I have to discuss really with someone, you know. Please give me the chance.
First off, it's actually, you know, by our code, it's not three stories. It's two and a half. And I mean, these meetings are noticed, and if there are people that want to come, I mean, tonight was their night. And they are basically have an approvable project here unless you can articulate some particular concern of the people who couldn't be here.
I don't know really, you know, so maybe I'm, you know, so... I don't know. So do I have no chance to speak?
This is your chance to speak.
I know. I mean, no chance to, I mean, you know, to do anything?
We generally don't... I'm not aware of continuations.
Not take it to the appeal period. You might not be aware that after the decision...
Anyone can appeal a zoning board decision. Anyone who's aggrieved may appeal. We're not going to offer legal advice, but any decision we make tonight is appealable.
Within a timeframe, 20 days.
Did you have a question, Jerry?
No, that was it. Just to remind you of the...
Sounds to me, ma'am, like you're concerned about the height of this building. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Would you write a letter?
Would you please just come up to the podium and identify yourself? I can't even see who was speaking. Oh, hi.
You have to speak so the audience... FCTV can pick you up.
Any other public comment? Board discussion.
I'm happy when it doesn't fit in. It's practically all capes and ranches. This is Breckenridge, Colorado, to me. That's what it looks like.
That's kind of... That's kind of retro.
Yeah.
Acorn or deck homes, which there certainly were tons of them around here.
It's going to stick out like a sore thumb.
From a zoning perspective, though, we generally don't... I don't know. We generally don't get into architectural design as a grounds.
But it's supposed to fit into the neighborhood.
I understand.
And it does not.
And you also do have an abutter who's essentially asking for a continuance. That being said, you know, they get notice in the newspaper. It doesn't grant people a lot of time necessarily to get representation if you so desire.
Oh, there's someone else here that could speak but doesn't want to. I mean, other people that, you know, are mentioned. I mean, she didn't mention any concerns other than three stories, which is not actually accurate as far as our structure is.
In her defense, the notice does not say the height either.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment?
Certainly.
I think it's important to just go over my presentation. We do meet the standard for the town of Falmouth height. And I can also tell you my own personal experience. In 1980, I came before the same ZBA, and I applied for a special permit, and I built a California ranch, an octagon, on Courier Road in East Falmouth. And I think what you have is... Falmouth is a very diverse town, and you're going to find that the town is changing, and we have a lot of new people coming into town who desire, you know, little different designs that have been customarily been accepted before, and the town is changing. I direct you to the corner of Scranton Avenue and Main Street. We have a three-story... A full three-story building going up for our senior residents, which is definitely needed. But the architecture, you'll see all across town, is changing. And it's... I believe it's a nice design. It's different than the houses that are there. And as I said, I think renewal and revitalization is going to continue to move up Maravista, and I think we'll see more and more houses changing dramatically over the course of time.
Continue with the board discussion. Jerry, your thoughts?
I have sympathy with the other board members, but I think it's... It is a changing dynamics. When I built my house, I put two pillars on it, and a local barber who's well-known said I was building a McMansion. So I think it's perspective. I'm not voting on it, so, you know.
Frank?
Well, I appreciate the comments of the members here that it, quote-unquote, "doesn't fit in," and it certainly is different. But the owner of the property is entitled to build what they want because we really don't have any control of our architectural features. As far as the height goes, it conforms to our bylaw, so we really don't have any grounds to step in and try and change that. I think they presented us with a pretty good plan considering the fact that they have a lot of constraints in a very small lot here. 21.2% lot coverage is... I would kind of expect more, actually. But... So I think their presentation is acceptable to me.
Mark?
I can hear both sides of the argument. Couple of squares of shingles might have changed things a little.
It is shingles.
They are?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah. I'll show the... We did try to be respectful.
They aren't that good. Of course, I'm blind in one eye. Can't see out of the other.
Sure, sure. Yeah, they might look a little gray on the cover sheet.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, they are. They're cedar shingles.
We didn't get any living color in ours. I'm sorry.
Sure.
But, you know, I mean, it's two and a half stories. I don't have any objections.
I'm looking at this from a zoning perspective, and while I certainly agree with your comments that it's not... It's certainly radically different from what is on Maravista, but we're not an architectural review board, and it's not in a historical district. So the comment about ridge height certainly is... It is a little bit higher, but it is within the bylaw. So my concerns are really about the third-floor coverage, but nothing that can't be conditioned. So I would... so I would be in favor with conditions.
Certainly grabs that morning sun, doesn't it?
Yes. Any other?
I think with the, now that I can see this, which we don't often get to see, with the shingles, it does soften it. It does soften the look. It fits a little bit better. I still think that throwing a contemporary into the middle of some of these homes and these established neighborhoods isn't always the best idea, but everybody has their own taste and we are not an architectural board, I agree. But seeing the shingles on that does soften it. I appreciate your showing and demonstrating that. There are no other letters of opposition to this, so I, I can't see why, I would say no.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Is there a second?
No second.
Give that to Mr. Senator in discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed, no testimony will be, no further testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve. I don't think we need to discuss anymore.
Give that to Mr. Senator.
I'll second that motion.
Second to Mr. Duffy. Findings?
Findings? Let's see what we have here. What we have, it's on, it's an RC zone, it's in the Great Pond Overlay District. What else do we have?
Little Pond Sewer District.
Little Pond Sewer District. It's on a public road. The lot is seventy-three hundred, seventy-three-ten. The structure is twenty-one point two and the complete, with the driveway and everything and outdoors, whatever, is thirty-two point six. Ridge height, thirty, did I get thirty-four on ridge height?
I got thirty-three-five by the testimony.
Thirty-three-five? Okay, thirty-three-five, sorry. Thirty-three-five on ridge height. It is sewed, four bedrooms. There is a comp sheet here. I think that's it, that's all I have for findings.
Court of any additional findings that want added?
One neighbor spoke against it because of.
Not everybody likes it.
One neighbor in opposition.
Oh, yeah.
Spoke concerning about ridge height.
About ridge height.
Any additional findings? Tony? Anything else?
Nothing.
Conditions? Per plans, standard hours of work, started framing. I'd like certification at framing about the square footage of the third floor, so it doesn't exceed fifty percent. Revised plans were submit, actually, we put this in finding, revised plans including water were submitted. If you can incorporate the engineering comments.
And water comments.
And the water comments, yep. Standard hours of work. If they need to, if it gets tight on the street, just to work with the police department to come up with a traffic plan. Any additional conditions?
Liked the way your bag matches the flowers.
Any additional conditions, Frank?
That was the only.
So I think for the abutters, if you could also include dark sky compliant lighting, that might be.
Yeah, that's reasonable. Dark sky compliant exterior lighting.
Do they need to file with engineering for the driveway?
Yes, that's it, yes. Any, all engineering comments incorporated.
Do they have to file for a number for the house?
So they, engineering has offered them an option, so they'll be able to select from those few that engineering offers.
Any other conditions?
The numbers match the bag and the flowers.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Reluctantly aye.
That's a vote, five oh. Thank you very much. Next up on our new hearings, we have zero-six-nine-twenty-three Tor, Ten Melrose Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a modification of special permit number ninety-seven-nine to allow alterations to the existing non-conforming dwelling to include an addition, expansion of the second floor porch slash deck additions.
All right, we have Michael and Patricia Tor for Otis Street Framingham, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a modification of a special permit, it's number ninety-seventy-nine pursuant to section two-forty-ten-two-A of the Code of Falmouth to allow alterations to the existing non-conforming dwelling to include an addition, expansion of the second floor and porch slash deck additions. The subject property is at Ten Melrose Ave. We have one letter in opposition. I'm correct. And from boards, up two letters, sorry. I apologize. Planning has no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Conservation, no comment. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Tower House Road and Melrose Ave are public rights away in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters of public rights away. Four, dry wells are proposed as we typically recommend. Five, erosion controls are shown on the plan and appear to be adequate to protect abutting properties on the public right-of-way. We recommend the following condition be included. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil, erosion, and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the Engineering Division page of the town's website. References to the Town Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the Zoning Board of Appeals, who will be the permitting authority for this project.
Regarding the opposition, one, I'm gonna characterize those concerned about runoff and water runoff. Could you just characterize what the second opposition was?
The first one is definitely runoff. The Nine Vernon, extreme, extreme water runoff problem. The second one is also Nine Vernon. Two from the same address, yeah. And this one goes into detail.
I do think they specifically note that they're not opposed to the project.
No, that was, it was, they're just concerned.
Concerned, right.
Not opposition, that's why I asked. I hadn't seen the second letter before the start of the hearing.
I think it might be the same, well, no, it's not the same person. Same address is given.
Mr. Clower, before we get in, have you had opportunity to see the opposition?
I have.
If you could just address them in your presentation.
Yeah, of course. And actually, the Arnsteins are here this evening too, so I've spoken with them prior to your.
Yours, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, this will be Jerry this time. Thank you, Dory.
For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in town representing Michael and Patricia Tor, the owners of Ten Melrose Avenue. They are seeking permission before you tonight to alter the existing non-conforming structure at Ten Melrose. This is located on the western side of Falmouth Heights. It is a very dense residential neighborhood. This particular lot is six thousand three hundred and twelve square feet and it's in a residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of just shy of eighteen hundred square feet. It's non-conforming as to front yard setback being twenty-one point nine feet where twenty-one, twenty-five is required and also lot coverage by structures being twenty-eight point five percent where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. They are proposing a modest addition, which is a slight expansion of the existing habitable space and then a reconfiguration of the existing decks. This proposal will eliminate the front yard setback, non-conforming setback, which will be improved to twenty-six point seven feet. The lot coverage by structures will be slightly improved, twenty-eight point five down to twenty-seven point eight percent. There's no change in the bedrooms, which remain at three. The proposed ridge height is twenty-four feet, four and a half inches, which is well below the thirty-five that is allowed by right. Despite these improvements, this does require a special permit under section two-forty-ten-point-two-A and two-forty-eleven-point-three-A four, formerly two-forty-three-C and sixty-nine-E. Under two-forty-ten-point-two-A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit provided that the board finds that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. We're asked to consider the standards of two-forty-twelve-point-one-E and whether or not the alterations create any new dimensional non-conformities in pair of views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there are no new, there are no new non-conformities created, that's a lot of N sounds in a row. The existing non-conformities are either eliminated or improved. I'm gonna look at the requirements of two-forty-eleven-three-A four as a kind of overlap with the other requirements of ten-point-two-A. In the residential C zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding twenty percent requires a special permit pursuant to eleven-point-three-A four. Here, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. This particular, this proposed house is below the average gross floor area and lot coverage and it's certainly in character with the neighborhood. There's no impacts on views and vistas, no effect of nitrogen, as is no increase in bedrooms. I did receive a copy of both letters from the owners of Nine Vernon, who awkwardly enough, also my clients, but we had, we've had a good conversation. I reviewed the report that their engineer gave them and the applicant is certainly sympathetic. We are proposing three new dry wells, which should significant, which should represent a significant improvement to drainage. All of the proposed downspouts will be tied into these dry wells. Currently, most of the downspouts discharge at grade. I did, when we received that, ask my client in advance of the storm to go out and put some silk bags and erosion fencing in, which he has done today. So those have been installed sort of as a gesture of goodwill in advance of the coming storm, but certainly because we want to assist too. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions, the existing non-conformity is, the front yard setback is eliminated, the lot coverage by structure is reduced. There's no new dimensional non-conformities, there's no adverse effects, and there's certainly none that would overbalance the benefits that I've described. Nothing about this proposal is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe this meets all the requirements of two-forty-ten-point-two-A, eleven-point-three-A four, and two-forty-twelve-point-one-E. I would ask that the board grant the special permit, but I'd of course be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Start with Tony.
This is, this fits in very well with the community, with the neighborhood. It's a great fit. I see no issues with that. My concern rests with the water runoff that we all know about. I did walk the property extensively around it, I can see where that, Main Street wall is in the back and how the house, number nine behind it is lower than that. I looked at all the pictures. I don't know if, and I'm not going to comment beyond that well that shows on this plan, if that's sufficient, it's done by an engineer. As long as that takes care of it, I don't have any issues.
Yeah, I mean, anything, anything we do in terms of drainage is going to be an improvement over what exists.
But beyond that, an improvement, it has to stop it.
I don't think we can stop it, Mr. Patricia, nor do I think is, is the applicant's obligation because there are other properties that run towards that property.
Okay.
We, you know, the runoff is whatever it is today, our job is to make it better. I don't think we can make it perfect.
So you're saying that other properties are shedding water onto this as well?
The, the direct abutting property with the garage, that's not part of this project.
Yeah.
That has its separate ownership. That also slopes downward towards that. I mean, it's on a hill, the whole hill, you know, because there's runoff coming from up above this too, that comes down onto this property, which goes down to the next property. It's a series of houses on a hill.
Yes, it sure is on that hill. All right.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
Suzanne? Thank you for addressing the issues about the runoff during your presentation. I'm satisfied with the addition of the dry wells. I think it's a nice product, otherwise reducing the non-conformities, bringing it more into line with the zoning bylaws, so thank you.
I saw the pictures of the foundation and the problems there, so while you're excavating, you should, I question whether this, well, I would just like to see you do as much as you can. And when they excavate that corner, I mean, it's more than evident, looking at the property, that anything you're gonna do is an improvement. And I know you're not gonna conquer it because the whole hill flows down there, but if you are excavating, you know.
What I actually said to my.
A French drain here and a French drain there and maybe a dry well on the.
Yeah, what I said to my client yesterday was, well, they're in the process of doing construction, it's a great opportunity for the Arnsteins to also, you know, utilize space on their lot if they need to access that back area between the, the foundation and the wall. You know, this is a situation where neighbors can be neighborly and help to make this as best we can.
Yeah, I, I hope you do. And you seem to get along, so as long as you have a good engineer, but I question if there's, but once you start digging, you might find there's more that you can do.
Mm-hmm.
And I hope that you do.
Frank, I'll get to you in a second. Ridge height on this project?
I think twenty-four feet, four inches, four and a half inches.
Thank you.
Presently, there are no dry wells on the property?
One of the, one of the downspouts tie, goes into the ground, so presumably there was a downspout, a dry well at one time. Whether or not it's still functioning after being constructed in nineteen-seventy-nine, I, I don't know. So there's presumably at least one dry well on site, but we're proposing three brand-new dry wells.
Presently, then, the runoff from the roof goes to the grade, goes onto the lot. And then you have, of course, the rain that's falling on the street, Melrose Avenue, you have the lawn.
And Tower House.
Tower House, that's, and also the rain that's falling on the lawn, so that's, there's a whole lot of water just flowing down the hill. And right now, there's really no way to abate it because there's no provision for it. But you've got three dry wells to at least see what you can do.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Jerry?
No additional comment.
Public comment? Sir, come up.
Thank you, I'm Jim Fox. I'm here with my dear friends Ken and Vani Arnstein, the Nine Vernon. I just wanted to quickly show, first of all, there was some clearing done on this site since the household a year or two ago. We know they have every right to do it and we're very in favor of the project, we're not trying to stop it. I've, I've had meetings with the DPW, the street, every, the ZBA, everyone we possibly can. There's, there's a serious, really serious water problem here. Oh, this is the view, this coming up, between the houses. Previously, this was heavily wooded and they have the right to cut down the trees and we agree to it, but sometime in the last year, we've had a condition where three times rivers are coming down the hill and actually bringing in six inches of sand into the basement. It's not just a water in the basement problem, there's extreme flow with it, so it, and I just wanted everyone to understand the magnitude and I've shared this with the DPW and the street. This will give you an idea, this is surface water flowing through the house and into the basement. This basement is fifteen feet back from the property line. This water is coming in the back underneath the house on, part of the house on pillars, surface water blowing through a window and flooding the basement. This started, well, we've had some tremendous rain, I guess the storm we had last week was as bad as any storm this town's ever seen and it's, they're dealing with it all over town. It's not their problem, but we needed to bring attention to it and try to solve it because it's actually taken out the foundation of the house. It's really, really serious. And we, we want, they, it sounds like they're gonna try to do everything they possibly can and we're just trying to make sure that everybody use this as an opportunity, so everyone knows what we're dealing with here. This, this is a footing, I don't know if you can see that, but this footing has been totally washed out. It's an old-fashioned Cape Cod footing on rubble, okay? And all of a sudden, you bring water running at the speed that's running through the, through the house. Totally washed out the footing and the house, and it's, the house will fall down if we don't address it. They're in the middle of a major renovation project and this has stopped the whole thing. This all, this all happened this year. We know it's not their issue. I wanted to just also point out, I walked the site and the neighbors, if you look across the street, every one of these houses across the street, their downspouts come down onto the driveway into Melrose. Across Melrose, between the barn, the garage here and this, has become a river funneling right into the Arnsteins' house. It's a huge problem. There's no catch patients on the street, there's no drainage, there's no swales, it's direct runoff all the way down the hill and it's really, it's a terrible situation and it's hurting them badly. So I'm working with everybody in town to solve it. I know this client's gonna do, we're not against their project, we just make sure that they do everything they possibly can, sounds like they're already doing that, and we want to use this as an opportunity to bring attention to how serious this problem is for us. That's it.
Has the town now investigated, affirmed?
They haven't even done anything yet. I just brought it to their attention yesterday, but I was lucky enough to meet with James Grady, the highway superintendent, and while I was on the way out, I bumped into Peter McConity, so I've had the attention to bring him to both those parties, but it's all fresh, they've all seen the same letter. This is all one day for notification out to other people. So we just want to make everyone aware, it's a really serious problem for us and we're working as hard and as fast as we can and we're confident with the team they have, they were to it, but we want to bring attention to it and wanted to use this meeting to do that.
Mr.
Any questions?
Certainly.
When you look at this, this, these drains are only, I mean, these, these dry wells are only taking the roof water, they're not taking anything from the street.
No, that's the whole problem.
That's the problem we have here.
With the neighbors across the street, on three houses, their downspouts come down with no dry with no dry wells into their driveway, down a steep driveway, getting velocity, hitting Melrose, which also slants. So by the time the water flow hits the applicant's property, it already has a speed going to it. You know, I think the ultimate solution would be catch basins and drains. They probably won't do that, but maybe a combination of swales and a little engineering on the town property.
Something to keep it going.
To move it around the houses and down the roads.
As long as everyone understands, these drains are only gonna take care of what's coming off the roof.
We know, we, we know that.
Okay.
And old drains clog up. We just want them to be designed to the best standard they possibly can and capture as much of the runoff as they possibly can. And that's all we can ask. Sounds like they're already doing it. They're out ahead of us already. I just needed to bring it to everyone's attention. That's all I have to say.
Other public comment?
My name is Catherine Calladen. I live at 29 Tower House Road. I've lived there for 55 years. I've owned property. This parcel has been, when I originally came, was a empty lot with a garage, which belonged to the Hobsons up two, two doors, and they sold it. And someone came along and bought it, the lot, and then we went through a lot of hearings. And it was decided that the lineage would be where the garage was. Those would be the pre-existing, non-conforming area. And that was over on the left and back a bit. There is a garage there now that Mr. Baltz owned, and he could not get a permit for that, so he stored his boat in there. When I look back, the other part was after they built the house, and it was agreed to. It was fine. I asked for the roof line to be slanted because I could see the harbor from the porch. And that was agreed to, and that was swell. And then in 1980, I hired a lawyer because there was a backhoe there digging one day. I had no notice. And I called Mr. Arment and asked him about it, and I told him I didn't get a notice. And it turned out that the building inspector had given him a permit for all these porches that are on the plan, and the garage, and an eight-foot addition on the kitchen. And evidently, the permit was given to the owner without a hearing at the time, and he had, he was gonna sue the town because he had the permit, because the building inspector gave it to him. And so they had another hearing, and they okayed it. And that went on for a while, and that's okay. I noticed it wasn't mentioned, that it was just a garage in the beginning, and then it had a permit in 1980. Was it '80? I think so. You didn't know that?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, okay, seventy-nine. And in '85, I put a slider upstairs, and I could see the harbor from the porch, too. And I put a 12-foot slider up there, and I've had a nice view. And also, with that garage and this new plan, it blocks the view I have of the porch and the slider. I'm one house up. I live on the corner, the opposite corner. So the other thing about it is that I feel they put the porch on as an addition and had a special permit for that. They went through here before. And now they have enlarged that to a second floor. And so I feel a little bit strange with the view going on the northwest corner where they're putting a enclosed porch, plus all these other porches they have. They've surrounded the house with porches before. Now they want to go up a flight, up to the second floor, for the bigger 400 feet, did you, did it say 400 square feet? That's 20 feet by 20 feet. Enlarging the upper levels, what's happening is the, let's say the house is squared off. Well, now they have the, a whole different roof line, which was gonna need new gables. I don't know. I, I think the house design is lovely, and I'm not sure it belongs on that lot right now. The other thing is, there are several oak trees there. They've been there a long, long time. Because they've grown so high and so big, they are blocking me for six months with all the trees. So I, I manage that pretty good, the trees. So they're blocking that five months, and now I have this roof line blocking it on the other side. I'll be lucky, I can see 10 feet. So that's not an objection so much. I know the rules are, are the rules. I know things change. The gentleman before this just said that he noticed how the architecture has changed. The Baltz's house at the top of the hill has changed. So the general environment of all the houses is gradually changing. And I, as I say, I, I think the house is very lovely, but Paul Ryan, who lived in this gentleman's house, who's having the water problem, he and I, when they were first constructing it, I asked about the roof. He was concerned about the water at that time. That's way back. And there's no question about it. The water rushes right down the street, comes off my roof, right down, and I'm the third house, up fourth, I'm the fourth house up. So, you know, it goes down there, and it's been a problem. I remember Paul mentioning that at a meeting. And so it is what it is. I talked to my son just again today, and he's been a great help. And, and he says, "Leave it alone, mother. The guy brought the lot, let him do what he wants." And I said, "Yeah, but," you know. So I just wanted to put that into the record about the history of the house, the history of the area, and the history of the construction there. Because after, I'm concerned about the lower level also. In the new plan, my daughter took off the whole program. It's 23 pages. I came off the computer because, if you catch single size, because it, when it came off the computer, it was on both sides. And I looked it over, and I've studied it. And it is within all the rules. But I do want to mention these two items, the corner on the porch and the trees. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for the history, ma'am. Other public comment? Any follow-up questions for the applicant by the board?
So where does the majority of this water comes? Down the hill in front of the garage and?
That's my understanding.
Runs down through that swale where the tree?
Yeah, I mean, given my most-
Taken out the trees didn't cause this to happen, did it?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think so. Let me just see here. So, where are we? So, as you'll see, most of the removal didn't actually take place on this property. It took place on the abutting property where the garage is. There was some mowing and some de-weeding that was done in this stretch here, but there was no removal of any significant bushes.
Changed the grade.
You know, I would just say, we got this, this information came to light yesterday. So we've, we've done as much as we can within that timeframe. I think that, to Mr. Petrucci's point, while we are only containing the roof runoff, at least that roof runoff is not becoming part of the problem. It really sounds like most of what needs to be corrected here is from the town or other properties that are discharging into driveways, into the street. We will do whatever was, whatever is within our power to mitigate this as much as we can.
Now, where the foundation damages, is that on the same side of that picture?
So I think what they were showing, the garage, the basement where the water was coming in, I think is over here.
No, but the damage, wasn't the damage to the foundation on this building?
It's on the other building behind it.
Oh, really? That thing's that old? Oh. I thought it was the, yeah.
So it's-
Some berms on the side of the road would do a lot.
Some berms on the side would do a lot, some drainage, some swales, anything there would, would be beneficial.
They only got 34 lot coverage. I mean, talk with Grady, you could probably put your own berms in. You're not gonna certainly get over it. Something has to be done. You just, and you just spoke with the DPW recently, Jim?
I believe yesterday, he said.
Yes, and we're clear, they can't solve the whole problem. We've also talked to the Sullivan's who own the house next door, or barn, next door. Their, their foundation's washing out, too. It's gonna fall down, and he knows it. He's gonna apply for a permit and build the new house. We're not considering, it's not their response, we're just asking for help from everybody we possibly can. And in cooperation, when the town does come and says we're gonna put a berm, both a berm, a swale and a berm, we'd like to put drainage and catch basins, but that isn't gonna happen. But if we could divert the water around and just get it running out in the road instead of through the Arnsteins' home, that would be a really good solution. And it's not, they're, everyone's working together as we can.
Well, seems like a good time to be doing it, at least in the instance of the two sides of this house.
And as I, as I did mention, they did actually install this today. With the coming storm, they wanted to be proactive, to do what they could to, to help. So this was installed just earlier today.
That's the left side?
Yes, so that's, that's the outdoor shower there. You can see, that's right here. That's what we're looking at. We're, we just saw this corner.
Does the board require any further discussion of the project?
Nope.
How would you like to proceed?
Motion closed.
Motion closed by Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Hearing is closed, no additional testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve, lighten the conditions by Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second Suzanne. Findings?
Findings? Let's see, we're in an RC zone, no overlay, no flood. There was one previous-
No FEMA flood.
FEMA flood, correct.
No tidal waters.
There was a previous special permit in '79. The lot is 6312 feet. It's on a public road. The existing is 28.5 over 36, so there is improvement. The proposed is 28, 27.8 over 34.2. Did I nail it, Kevin?
Thirty-four point eight.
Ah.
So.
Damn. Been trying. Ridge height seven, 24.4. Got it. There is a comp sheet in here.
The average in the neighborhood is 29.22, so this is under the average.
Right. We did have two letters with concerns. I think that's all I have on here.
Under findings, testimony from audience, Mr. Fox, about the issue of flooding and concerns, testimony from an abutter with the history of the neighborhood, also with concerns about flooding.
Video. Video. A testimony from the applicant that it will contain the roof runoff.
Correct.
And not necessarily the yard.
As well as the addition of the, the silt barrier previous to a pending storm. Any additional findings? Conditions?
Careful during construction.
Per plans.
Always a safe one.
Soil erosion, sediment controls, per engineering comments. Testimony was that dry wells would be installed, will condition that, that they shall be installed.
And maintained.
And maintained.
Yeah.
It's gonna remain at three bedrooms.
Is it appropriate to say they'll try to work with DPW to see if there are mitigation measures that might be able to be done?
Testimony.
There's really nothing.
The testimony is that, I think everyone's trying to work together. I don't think we have the power to condition it. I think everyone in the neighborhood knows certainly what's going on. I mean, we're getting worried now.
If the DPW is gonna do work in the streets, they don't need their permission. That's okay.
They might be able to build their own berms.
If you want to put in as a finding that there's ample testimony that, that clearly drainage is needed in this particular neighborhood.
By the town.
By the town. That we can do with the applicants in the neighborhood. Additional conditions?
No additional.
And I'm sorry, under findings, existing nonconformities are being reduced or eliminated. So it's bringing the house, the project more in harmony with the zoning bylaw. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That is a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank everyone for their testimony and their concerns about the water runoff.
Appreciate it.
Next up, we have hearing 070-23, Clark, trustee of 711 West Falmouth Highway. West Falmouth requesting a modification of special permit number 1737 to convert the existing three-family into a duplex and construct a new duplex structure.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Like to make a disclosure?
Certainly.
Don't forget it's Jerry. Let's tell you this one.
My name is Frank Duffy. I'm a member of this board. I'm gonna make the following disclosure. I'm a director of the Falmouth Housing Corporation. We have hired Linda Clark as the executive director of the Falmouth Housing Corporation. When I saw this application, I recognized that the owner, Clark Trust, and Linda are part of the same family. I inquired of her if she had any interest in this property, and she has informed me she does not. So based upon her representation that she has no interest, that's my only connection. I filed a disclosure statement with the Board Selectmen under chapter 268A, section 23B3, and I'm gonna proceed to participate in the decision.
I'm now gonna make a disclosure, having not realized that Linda Clark, well, based on your, I, Linda Clark is the director of Falmouth Housing Corporation. I'm an attorney. Falmouth Housing Corporation has retained me to do eviction work for them. I do not believe that a conflict exists, but I will put that on the record this evening. If the applicant's representative would like me to step aside, I'll be happy to do so. I will file a disclosure, a written disclosure with the Selectmen. I was unaware of this was the same Clark family, but given that she has no interest, then I would just put the disclosure on the record. On this one, I'm gonna be appointing Tony. You're up. And if you want to read into the record the opening.
All right. We have Jean Clark, trustee, 35A North Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for modification of special permit number 1737 pursuant to section 240-10.2A and 24062B, the code of Falmouth, to convert the existing three-family into a duplex and construct a new duplex structure. The subject property is 711 West Falmouth Highway in West Falmouth. We have two letters of concern and three letters of opposition. And from town boards, the assessors office has no comment. Concom has something here. They have a certificate of, oh, historical, excuse me. Falmouth Historical Commission has issued a certificate of appropriateness. That was historical. My department has no comment. Concom has no comment. And we have engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. West Falmouth Highway is a state right-of-way in this area. Any alterations within the right-of-way could require permission from Mass DOT. Two, any connections or alterations to public- Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public, public property, abutters, or rights-of-way. Four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures, or stormwater harvesting, harvesting measures such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, this site does not conform to current address policies, and not all existing addresses being used or in the system. We will bring this lot up to current standards when a building permit is filed, filed for. Below is a draft address scheme for this lot that can be used in the paperwork until officially assigned. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval, a fixing of legible numbers required, there is a time limit for compliance. Board of Health, a new septic system for 10 bedrooms as shown on the site plan was installed, installed in 2022. The system is shown to be for the existing two structures and the proposed duplex. Health has no issues with this project as long as the total number of bedrooms from all three structures doesn't exceed 10. And I think that's all I have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Kevin Clower. I am here tonight representing Jean Clark, the trustee of the W. Clark Trust. They are the owners of 711 West Falmouth Highway. And I'm joined tonight by Jared Shagnon, who is the property manager, an employee of the trust, and is family to the trust as well. This property is located at the northern end of West Falmouth Village, directly across from Michelle Station. The lot is just shy of an acre, it's 41,734 square feet, and it is split zoned B3 and residential B. Currently, there are two existing dwellings on the property. There's a three-unit dwelling nearest the street, which includes a two-bedroom apartment, a one-bedroom apartment, and a studio. And there's also a single-family dwelling at the rear, which has two bedrooms. The front house is non-conforming to front yard setback, it's 23 feet where 25 is required, and it's otherwise conforming to rear yard and side yard setbacks, as well as lot coverage requirements. Both of these houses were constructed quite a while ago. The assessors cards reflect 1900. It's, I'm not sure exactly when they were built, but they've been there for quite some time. There is an existing 1963 special permit, which allowed division of the front structure into three units. That special permit, despite that special permit, it is still non-conforming in the sense that we have multifamily housing located in both the B3 and residential B sections. We are requesting a special permit under 24010.2A and 246.2B, which is previously 243C and 51A5. We are proposing to construct a new duplex located entirely in the business zone. In connection with that, there'd be an elimination of one of the existing units, the studio unit in the front building, resulting in a total of five units of housing on the split zone lot. This has been reviewed and approved by historical. There was a certificate of appropriateness issued, both for the proposed duplex and for the proposed fence. Lot coverage by structure from this would be 9.1%, and lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking would be 22.1%, both well below the coverages that are allowed. The new duplex would be located entirely in the B3 district, there'd be two, two-bedroom apartments. Other than the exist, elimination of an existing unit in the front building, there's no proposed change to either of the existing structures. So there'd be a total of five units on the site for 10 bedrooms total. There is a new 10-bedroom Title V wastewater system that was installed last year. The duplex as proposed does not create any new non-conformities, complies with setback requirements, and meets all lot cover requirements. Under 24010.2A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Ask to consider the standards of 240, oh God, what is it? 11, 12-point, I had, I had the wrong.
24010.2A?
12.1E. Because I had 240216, and that's not right. And whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, the non-conforming structure that we're talking about is the three-unit dwelling. There's no new non-conformity created, where all we're proposing is to go from three units to two within that building. The proposal does not impair views and vistas of the public and fits with the neighborhood. The multifamily use that we're requesting is allowed under 6.2B, allows for density of less than six, up to six units per acre. And ask that the public good be served, that the business zone not be adversely affected, and that the uses not be noxious to multifamily use. This proposal would result in five units, adding rental inventory to the housing stock. Does not negatively affect the business zone, and the uses allowed in the zone are not noxious to multifamily housing. Developments of this nature have been reviewed and approved by the zoning board a number of, on a number of occasions, some very nearby. Appeal number 72-01 was fieldstone in place at West Moreland Drive, approximately 500 feet away from this, wherein the ZBA approved six acres, six units on 1.2 acres. Appeal number 51-13 at 681 West Falmouth Highway, approximately 275 feet away, was five units. Most recently, in North Falmouth, there was 259 Old Main, which was approved, four units on a split zone lot. We are aware of the correspondence received from abutters, would like to address both some of their stated concerns and some inaccuracies within that correspondence. Much of the stated concerns dealt with the condition of the site and the views. The site has been cleaned up significantly, the trash has been removed, there is a new fence and plantings that have been installed. I don't know when the board members may have gone, but as of yesterday, there is a new fence that now runs the property. I have photos that are available. And the plantings were installed, installed as per the applicant's promise to the abutters, and consistent with historic approval. There is an implication that there is currently a fifth unit in the basement of the single-family dwelling, that is not true, it is a bedroom for the home. Actually, Jared's mother and her stepfather live in that back dwelling. They have another adult son who stays with them periodically, it is not a separate unit in the basement, it is just a bedroom. There is implications that there are three businesses on the site. This is not accurate, there are no businesses that are run from this site. One resident works for the town DPW. He has a truck that looks like a landscaping truck, but it's his personal vehicle, it's not registered commercially. He also has a town vehicle he drives periodically. There is a claim that there's a furniture refinishing business, which is, again, not a business, it is Jared's mother's hobby, in her own words, she's retired and bored. It is not an ongoing business, it is not an ongoing concern. And there was a claim that there was a construction or a carpentry company on the site, no such business exists, there is, Jared's stepfather is a carpenter, he has a work truck, but it is not a construction office, it is not an ongoing business there. There's concern regarding the proposed duplex basement, that it may become a unit. Again, this is going to be a decision, it's going to be conditioned. It is storage space for the duplex, and it's also common laundry for the other units on site. Currently, there is no laundry within any of the buildings. So the new duplex will have a basement that can be accessed from the outside, that will have both storage areas and common laundry for the property. There was a claim that the Clark Trust owns 60 properties in town, which is just not accurate. The W. Clark Trust owns 15 properties, there is no connection to any other entity, and there's no such collective Clark Trusts. There's concerns over the number of units, and whether the change to the existing three-unit structure can be conditioned, can be enforced. We would be glad to condition any potential approval on a walkthrough by the assessors. There's an assertion that the public good is not served, and I would certainly disagree with that. Any addition to rental stock is welcome, we have a significant need for rental units. While this is not restricted as affordable, nor is it a 40B project, the current units are rented effectively at or below the affordable range. The units on the site currently rent between $900 a month and $1,400 a month, from a studio to a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom. Proposed units will likely be rented at $1,900 a month for two bedrooms. I would not want that to be a condition, because market rates, market rates change over time, but that is, they, they do not rent these, they, they, they keep these units very affordable. There was a claim that there was, in the addition of too much pavement and parking, what we're proposing does not change what exists, and what exists is well below the percentages allowed within the zoning bylaw. This claims that there's no precedent for this, for similar approvals. As noted, there's many similar special permits throughout West and North Falmouth, all allowing multifamily use under 2406.2B. The applicants provide housing at very reasonable costs, they live in Falmouth, they have a long history in Falmouth. To claim that they aren't vested in the community is simply inaccurate, and frankly, it's offensive. It was an email from Maury Harlow Hawks that actually raised good points, some of which we'd be happy to add as a potential condition to a decision. She asked that the water service go through the driveway rather than under the stone wall, which we'd be happy to do. And she asked that dry wells be added, much as engineering did, which we would of course be happy to do as well. Would also be happy to condition the exterior lighting to be downlighting and dark sky compliant. This proposed duplex is completely conforming to front, rear, and side yard setbacks. The entirety of the property complies with lot coverages, both by structures and structures, paving, and parking. There's no new non-conformities. I believe this meets all the requirements set forth by 10, 24010.2A, 246.2B, and 24012.1E. I'd be glad to address any questions that the board may have regarding this project, otherwise I would ask that you grant the special permit.
Board questions, start with you, Jerry.
No questions at this time.
Right.
No, I don't have any particular questions at this time. I did, however, visit the property yesterday, I don't know if other members did, but as Mr. Clower has represented, there was somebody there, three or four trucks from a fence company, and they were putting up a big fence between the property and the, and the property behind it.
Mark?
No, so the two units in the back? Or two bedrooms in the back, rather?
Yes.
Huh? Nothing else, it makes 10.
Oh, thank you. Just wanted to ensure my notes and testimonies clear, five two-bedroom units, correct?
Two.
Yeah.
Three.
Each of the duplexes are two bedrooms?
Yes, it'll be five, it'll be five two-bedroom units, yes.
Not, not to exceed 10 bedrooms. You have no issue about moving the water service to avoid going, okay? Dark sky compliant lighting? You have no issue?
No.
That was a condition?
No.
Dry wells?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any questions, I may have some follow-up depending on public comment. Thank you.
I live on the other end of West Falmouth, down by Sacanestet, and I drive by there, and it, it, the yard until it got cleaned up this week, did not look good at all, it looked pretty crappy to me. I wouldn't want it in my next-door neighbors for me to live next door to. Is there going to be any screening for the parking lot?
The house is going to screen, the parking lot from the street, and then-
For the neighbors?
There's, the, the fence was just installed today.
Can we do trees too?
There is trees that were installed today as well.
Okay, good, I didn't, I didn't go back to it, so. Are the trees in that pick?
I can show you. So this is actually, on our property, the, the, the fence jogs in, a number of trees have been planted here along the rear.
Can we condition that those must be kept up?
Sure.
I think we should, yeah.
Any else? No. Tony?
Look, we all know I'm not an attorney, but I have to bring this up. When was, when was the special permit granted for the three units?
1963.
So it was prior to 1988, Tophius versus Butler.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I'm not an attorney. But Tophius versus Butler specifically says that when you join these lots together to get the acre, to get, and I can see you're ready to jump on this, you're ready for it, that, yes, you can get six units per acre, and I have no issue with that, it's happened at 259 Old Main. But it specifically, specifically says that one zone can be active, the other has to be passive.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, they're both active. So I said, my contention would be that because of Tophius versus Butler of 1988, you no longer can build these two units, because it's active, both are active.
So what I would say is, what we have currently is a non-conforming situation. We have pre-existing non-conforming situation wherein you have multifamily use on, in the residential B section. We are proposing, our proposed duplex is only within a business three. I don't think I could propose a duplex in, I could seek to alter the non-conforming use, but that's not what we're requiring, that's not what we're requesting. We're requesting only the duplex be located within the business zone, which is allowed under Tobias B. Butler.
There's a lot of, there is a tremendous amount of land here. So would you, would we condition this because of Tophius versus Butler, that there would never be a single-family or any other units built in the back?
I would say, you, you certainly could. And I think that the bylaw wouldn't, wouldn't allow that anyways, because it allows only up to six units per acre, and we're at five units for just under an acre.
You don't have an acre.
We're at 41,000 feet, so we can have up to five units under the bylaw. So, however, the bylaw could change. I don't expect it will, but it could. So I'd rather not have a condition that would preclude us from taking advantage of whatever rights we might have if the bylaw were to change.
I'm struggling with this because of Tophius versus Butler, and again, I'm not an attorney, but this was the situation at 259 Old Main Road. And as a result, the residential B section of that lot was rendered unbuildable. Any comment on that part of it? I have more.
My, my only comment is that what exists today is a pre-existing non-conforming use of multifamily. So we're proposing the use that's allowed by special permit within the district that allows that.
But this case would not allow it.
If, if, if this was like 259, and I was proposing, there was carte blanche, right? Everything's gone. I would only be proposing in the business zone. But right now, we have a zoning district that goes through this property here. We have a single-family house that's part of a multifamily scheme located in the residential B district. It's simply a non-conforming use. It's, like, like many things that, throughout town, you have uses that have, that predate that, that particular issue. So under Tobias B. Butler, if I was proposing that everything be torn down and be rebuilt, it would only be within a business district. However, we have an existing non-conforming use of multifamily on both, on both portions of the lot, but what we're proposing is conforming, because it's only within a business district.
But it doesn't preclude you from coming back and doing something in the back at some point in time, no?
I mean, we can't because, we can't because the bylaw wouldn't allow it.
Change the bylaw.
All right. I just wanted to get to yes, if I can, and I, I'm not comfortable with it. So I've, I've asked the question, it's been answered.
I did have one follow-up. 10 bedrooms, how many parking spots? I counted eight unless I-
There's eight in this, so there's eight in this, in this parking area here, and then there's a gravel parking area up behind here as well.
Approximately how many spots did you say in the gravel area? I didn't know if gravel was going to be used for parking or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
It's got to be six.
You could fit quite a few, I mean, we're-
Okay, thank you. Any additional follow-up questions for the board?
Yeah. How many square foot is the front park, the business district?
I don't know the exact number.
Really? What's the line on it?
One more thing, the only other thing that bothers me is the affordability aspect of it, this chops away at our next 40B, we eliminate it, you know, takes it off stock. And that stinks.
I'm not sure I follow, Ms. Murphy.
If we're allowing more units, if we're trying to, it, it's not a 40B unit.
No.
It can't go towards our 40B stock.
Sure.
Takes away from our 40B stock.
I don't think it takes away from the 40B stock.
Yes, it does.
So-
It adds.
We're adding, we're adding one unit of housing effectively here. It's a net gain of one.
Is it taking one away?
Yep. And, you know, these are, while it's not a 40B project, they don't want to do a 40B project, because they're not trying to squeeze 12 units here. They're trying to get what's allowed under the bylaw.
So half of the back property is in the business district, and half is in the-
Yes.
Pretty much half and half.
Yeah, and you don't have that number, huh?
I, I don't have it readily available. You can see the zoning district is this blue line here, Mr. Finer, that cuts through the back of the building.
It is interesting.
Public comment?
Yep.
Hi. Hi, I'm Annie Connolly. It's good to be back up here. Just kidding. You got a new podium? It's very fancy. So I live in West Falmouth. I grew up in West Falmouth. I sent you folks an email earlier today. I would... Not that I want to argue with my esteemed friend Kevin Clower, but there is a Facebook post for furnishing business at that site. I have screenshots I can show the board, so that's not entirely accurate. Also, the fertilizing business, we've been told by the man who runs it that it's a side gig. He has a great big ride-on lawnmower. I don't know why somebody would have that if they weren't mowing lawns, a lot of them. And back to that fertilizing, finishing furniture, those are noxious fumes. They have... Some of them are flammable. Is that accurate to have it in a multifamily setting? Methinks not. The last thing I want to point out relative to affordability or lack of affordability, this is a market rate project. Yes, they may rent it at a lower rate than you'd see maybe in another part of town, but there's nothing to preclude them raising those rates if they can get the money. And that's, I think, a problem. That's where I think the definition of the public good and your references to affordability and deed restrictions and all that sort of thing that I used to do in my past life is very relevant. We have housing stock. The references and the comps that Mr. Clower mentioned are private condominiums. They all sold for over a million dollars. A million dollars a unit. That's a pretty big difference. What else was I going to say? Oh, what about leases? And what about the Board of Health? Does the Board of Health inspect these units annually? Do they have yearly leases? Or is this going to be rented by the week, or the weekend, or the summer? Is there anything to stipulate that? I mean, I think this is a can of worms, and I would recommend that the board continue it and really think about it and get additional feedback from other housing experts who are still active in the game. I'm not. And that's it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I ask a question?
Hi.
Are you suggesting that there are unpermitted home businesses?
Yes. Yes, I am suggesting that. Shh, you can't do that.
And you approve of that because you have a Facebook page?
I have a Facebook post, but I also... It's a really... It's 3.2 miles village, and many of us have been there for 40 years, so...
You know, they could be permitted... They could get it permitted.
Yes, they could.
But it's not permitted.
But it's not permitted, and it's a heavy use. It's a... If you're going to have a landscape company or grass mowing business and a multifamily housing site or a furniture refi... It's not like there's an accountant or somebody doing the books for somebody, you know, or helping at tax time. This is heavy use. There's a lot of stuff that goes with that, and there's multiple trucks. So it's not quite as it was presented, is, in my opinion.
Other public comment?
Thank you.
Got a question for... Nope, sorry, ma'am. We're not done. You don't have to help see.
As you know, we don't do enforcement here.
I know.
Have you brought your concerns to the building department?
I did. Shh.
Okay, so you haven't?
I haven't, but I certainly will.
Go ahead. No further questions.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Brian Toeholke. I am a butler at the back of the property at 40 Ambleside Drive, immediately on the back. I submitted a letter to the board last week and a follow-up letter this week, and I refer you to that, but I'll just briefly summarize what the letter said. It's a letter of concern. Some of the concerns have been addressed, mainly because we're directly behind. Over the last couple of years, they've taken out a lot of brush, foliage, greenery, et cetera, in the back of the property, put in this big gravel driveway and big gravel parking lot. That's a concern to us because it basically is not good for our view. It's not, you know, for the value of our property and the view that we have out of our back deck and our upper back deck. So we talked to Jared Shagnon, and he's very, very kind about taking care of putting up a big... Or saying they would put up a big fence together with plantings that would basically mask all of this public... All of this parking from our back view. The trees were planted about a week or two ago. The fence was put up yesterday, and for all practical purposes, the fence does a pretty good job of blocking all of this parking, so we're very happy about that. There's one place along the fence where there should have been a tree put in. There's a scraggly little thing. There should have been a tree put in there to replace that, but we ask that that be The other main concerns that we have basically are parking. I have no idea if there's any restriction on the amount of parking that can be done here, but we're talking about, what, nine-bedroom units? Let's see, two, four, or 10-bedroom units? You know, if you have a couple cars per unit or maybe even more, you're potentially talking nine, 10, maybe even up to 15 cars being parked in all these parking lots, the gravel parking lot and the asphalt parking lot below. That's a lot of parking. I don't know if you can restrict that any way, if there's any way that you can place conditions on that. I would like to know the answer to that. All right? The other main thing is the number of units. According to my information, the best I understand, if this were an acre, you could have six units there. Right now, they're proposing five units on something less than acre, which seems to be acceptable under the existing conditions. I would like to know if you can place restrictions on future use in terms of expanding beyond the five units on less than an acre. I heard the comment to the effect that, well, if the zoning bylaw was changed, that potentially could happen, but I don't know if you can restrict it beyond that or not. So those are my questions, and those are my concerns, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Other public comment? Other public comment?
Thank you for having me. My name is Allison Jessup, and I'm a nurse practitioner at Falmouth Hospital. I'm also Italian. Cogliani's my last name. I'm married to Kurt Jessup, and we reside at 701 West Falmouth Highway, and we love where we live. And I probably would not have brought the property ahead, knowing that this was going to take place. I've been a huge in opposition to the project for multiple reasons. I... The three... I have quite a few concerns, of which I've laid out in two letters that I've sent the board, one a few days ago and one was this morning. The three-family house... The three-family house currently has three tenants. Upstairs is this wonderful gentleman who works for the DPW and has a very large, of which I'd be happy to show you, truck. Annie unfortunately is mistaken. He owns a fertilizer and irrigation business, okay? And he does carry fertilization on the back of the truck. I'm very friendly with him, and he does operate the business out of the home, and he is in the B3 district. He makes about $100,000 a year extra. I know all the details of his business. He leaves after work and goes out and does fertilization and irrigation. He's actually worked on Jared's property. Secondly, there is a... What is a small unit called? Studio up in the second floor. I'm guessing they will be evicting one of the tenants to make that a two-family. And down below, there are two very lovely sisters who live down below. So they will need to be evicting a tenant in order to conform this to a two-bedroom. Let's make that clear, okay? In the back bedroom, in the back unit, which was this wonderful woman who lived there 30-plus years, they evicted her and they moved Jared's mother, Fawn Baker, who does do furniture refi... Finishing, of which she gave me a quote in writing to refinish my furniture. I have it in writing. And they do do furniture refinishing outside with noxious fumes on a regular basis, painting. It is sort of a side business hobby, but it is in the back area, which is not B3-zoned. And if you'd like to see the text messages from her offering in trade money for furniture refinishing, I'd be happy to show you this. Thirdly, in the bottom unit, there is a separate entrance, of which his brother was living in intermittently. He's been in and out, and he does use that downstairs door, okay? So you're looking right now at essentially five units, three in the main house and two, at least two people coming in and out of two separate units. They've now gotten smart and realized they need to button things up because they need the back unit to appear to be one. They technically could rent that as two, and now they're proposing two more, which ultimately makes seven units. So until they do exactly what they've proposed to do, you're looking at seven units on the property, okay? And as far as like... I did see some photographs, and I mailed them in to the board.
You're giving it to the board?
Whoever needs to see it. But this is the truck. That's the fertilization truck. This is where they do the contractor. His stepfather is a contractor. He drives a commercial van, and he works out of the cottage. And these are some of the pictures, which the board is more than welcome to have. I also have other pictures showing the downstairs apartment being used, the brother sitting outside, the brother sitting outside, the stepfather painting, tarp and ladders, and unfortunately, the stone wall in the front that has never been fixed. These are all digital photos I can provide, as many as you would like. So my biggest concern is although they are stating that they're proposing five units, at the end of the day, once this is passed, that you will ultimately be looking at like six, possibly seven, and if by chance they put somebody in the basement of the new two-family, you could ultimately be looking at eight apartments. And who is going to manage that or make sure that they're in compliance with their intended five units? And when will the person in the studio apartment be convicted?
Evicted.
Evicted, I'm sorry. So these are my concerns. I think I probably have a bazillion more concerns, but these are my concerns. And I live next door, and it's unpleasant to live next to there because it has been unkept, as Suzanne has noticed and said, extremely unkept. They mowed it this week. They put the fence up this week, and they cleaned it this week, and it's all just been this week. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you.
Great. My name is Kurt Jessup. Jim, I met you the other week. Good to see you again. Mr. Duffy, I know you. I don't know if you remember me. I do object slightly to the relationship with Clark Trust that currently exists, so I will say that upfront. I'm not sure how intimate or to what level it is, but it's a little bit of a concern to me. And Jared has been great. He's done most of what he said he's going to do, the fence, the shrubbery and everything. We very much appreciate. That's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is what goes on after the fact? The fence is up, the shrubs are up, now what happens? The place isn't cleaned up appropriately, kept the way that we feel it should be. We have no further ramifications as a result thereof. So it's always been an ongoing concern. In addition to that, I do feel it's a... I'm not a... I'm not an attorney, but nonconforming use, when I look at it, it's smaller than an acre, so how in fact can we allow people to put six units in an area that's less than an acre? I don't quite understand it. In addition to that, I am grossly concerned about the traffic that goes on currently in the future when these are developed. Potentially, you have four more people. There's already eight trucks, four more people, four more cars. All of a sudden, you're looking at 12 cars in a residential area. And, you know, I've been in this village for 35 years. I really don't want to see our property values diminished. I don't. We bought the place for five and a quarter. The town's now got it, assessed it a million. If someone comes in, wants to buy it, they might say, "We're not going to pay you a million bucks" because now you've got a commercial entity that's adjacent to you on the north side. It really has an impact on what we currently have and what we believe should be the flavor and feel of West Falmouth Village. So I don't... Not trying to stop it. Once again, Jared's been great, but I can see this going forward and not being maintained, monitored, and watched. And I'm concerned who's going to do it after the fact? Is it going to continue? I don't know.
So some of the concerns, and I'm certainly understandable, I'm also a West Falmouth resident, need to be brought to the enforcement. You're not the enforcement arm.
Understood.
They need to go to the building inspector, or if you contact Noreen Stockman over there, she can refer you if it's something that's not under the purview of the building inspector. We don't do enforcement. If there are unpermitted apartments and so on...
I'm not asking you to enforce. I just want to...
I understand.
Who would? How will it be done?
Just want to answer that we can't... As a matter of law, we're generally prohibited from looking at previous violations as part of our deliberations. What the board wants you to know is that that's the mechanism if there are issues and to anyone else in the audience, and that's the appropriate venue to bring those issues up.
I can't do it either. You know, I'd be trespassing. But right now...
You can make a complaint, though. That's what I'm saying.
It doesn't look good. It's unattractive. I don't want it to continue, and I don't want it amplified any more than it already is. I'm all in favor of using real estate to its highest and most effective value, but honestly, I don't like the look of what's going on. I never have, and I'm very, very, very concerned about the impact on our property value. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for the additional public comment? Any follow-up questions for the applicant? Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Jim Fitzpatrick, and I live in Seven Cordwood Landing, which is diagonal to the property. You know, I don't really understand the whole process here. I understand there's a set of rules that are set, the zones that we define, and you say, "Hey, do you follow the rules or not?" What we just heard is that we have neighbors that have not been good neighbors. In the last month or two, they've cleaned everything up, and it looks great, and they say it's all going to be perfect going forward, but the track record isn't that. And you say we don't need to take that into... You can't take it into consideration, but it seems like it's all that's important to us, is that you have a neighbor with a bad track record who then says, "Oh, I'm going to change everything, and I'm going to add more people to this property." It doesn't ring well with me. It's just my own opinion that it's profitable for them at our expense, all the neighbors around the property. So that's really all I have to say, is that it's... Maybe you can explain how the process works. Is there any judgment that you pass, or do you simply say they're following the rules? They said they're going to follow the rules, so we have to pass the... Pass there.
The board has discretion. It's a request for discretionary grant. The board has discretion to approve or deny or can impose reasonable conditions if they approve to address some of these issues. I don't have time to get into how the board deliberates. Everyone is slightly different.
Discretion is the point.
It's a discretionary grant of authority.
Okay.
That's the short answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Other public comment? Sir? Is this going to be repetitive?
I'm back again. I just wanted to state, it's in the letter, but I wanted to state that we would like the fence, the plantings and so on that mask the back of that property from our property be maintained in perpetuity, and that that be part of the conditions for approval of this project if it does go forward.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Manese. I live over across the street at 708 West Falmouth Highway. What is a setback? I don't know, but it's very close. It's close to the road. It's high. It shadows out the existing house. The fence looks okay, but it's a fence that took the trees away from us, you know? We don't have trees now in front of the fence. I really don't have much other to say, that why don't they just fix what they have and do not evict anybody else? I mean, you think that this is going to be a big deal, like, oh, we have extra bedrooms now? This is... Goes to solving our problem of housing in Falmouth. It doesn't.[1695.16] And if you ask me, it's not affordable. $1,800 a month? That's not affordable for the regular person. I've been here for 60 years, my whole life, West Falmouth, right there. So I think it's close to the road, it blocks the existing house, and that's all I have.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Tammy Bowman, 708 West Falmouth Highway. I'm right across the street. My concern is everything that everybody's been saying, but my concern as well is the fence that has been put up. Like, I mean, this is a historic zone. We have this big, huge, monstrous fence now that's... There should be plantings in front of it. And the parking is really a big issue, you know? Like, there's so many rooms that are going to be rented. So, I mean, you're not just looking at two people per unit or so forth. You know, you have the kids coming in, you have this coming in, you have a holiday, you have 20 people out there. Where are they going to park? On 28A West Falmouth Highway? In front of my house? In front of Ann's house? You know, so I think that is like a really big issue. I know this is going to be going forward, but for us to really keep the boundaries going, you know, so the neighbors in our house doesn't depreciate as well, like Kurt was saying. But if we can just, you know, look at those things as well, because we know they're going to go forward. But, you know, for an eyesore and all this stuff, you know, with the big fence, I mean, it looks like... It's not historic. You know, where is a stockade fence in West Falmouth Highway? I can't tell you. There's one. And there's no plan... It's just, it doesn't look good. It doesn't look good, but thanks.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Ann Ellis. I live directly across the street. I'm at 704 West Falmouth Highway. And from when I look out my window, all I see is junk. The whole yard is a mess. As we mentioned, there used to be a woman that lived there, and she was evicted so that the people could move into that back cottage. She used to keep up the yard, and it was gorgeous. A few years ago, they decided to widen the driveway, and there's a beautiful stone wall there. And it was a granite stone wall, yeah. And part of it was knocked down. It was put back, something like I would do, because I don't know how to build a stone wall. I mean, it looks really bad, and I'm concerned if the stone wall is going to stay there, the same as it is, you know, historic district. There's also a stone wall, a granite stone wall out back, where they've just put up a split rail fence or whatever it is. Is that stone wall going to stay there, too? I really... I've lived here... I'm in my grandparents' house. My grandkids are the sixth generation to live in the house. And I went through a lot when I had to put on the addition to my house. And I just can't believe that this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments? Mr. Clower, you've had some concerns raised. Care to respond, any?
I'm going to try to tackle these in a way I wrote them down, so it's going to be jumping around a little bit. The bylaw requires two parking spaces per unit, one and a half for one bedroom, or two spaces for a two-bedroom. However, the lease is actually limited to two as well. So there'll be a limit of two cars per unit. But that's also what is required by the bylaw. There was a comment that the prior approvals for sales of condominiums, I don't see how that's relevant. A unit is a unit, whether they choose to condominiumize them and sell them, or whether they choose to rent them. We're applying under the same section of the bylaw. The bylaw makes no differential between rental units and sale units. No one here is being evicted.
No one here is what? I didn't hear...
Being evicted. None of the existing tenants will be evicted.
So where will the person...
So...
Nope, nope. There's a process.
Yep. I mean, we're going to have two new units. There are any number of potential solutions there, but they've discussed this with the tenants. They're not evicting anyone for this purpose. The basement in the back cottage is not a unit. There's no kitchen. It is just a bedroom with stairs to the upstairs. Yes, there is an egress, but it's a walkout basement that is also a bedroom. There's no prohibition on that.
Are there two bedrooms upstairs?
Nope, just one bedroom upstairs.
Jim?
Just one bedroom upstairs.
In the cottage. You know, there is enforcement available for any of these potential issues. If the neighbors have a concern relative to anything that's approved by this board, as to units, as to usage, there is enforcement mechanisms available through the building department, through the zoning enforcement officer. We are... We have currently four units on site. We're proposing to eliminate one in the three-bedroom and to construct two new duplexes... No, one new duplex, two units. It was a comment that this isn't the flavor of West Falmouth, and I would very much disagree with that, because I listed a number of developments along West Falmouth Highway, but you have the Ideal Spot Motel, you have the West Wing Condominiums, you have the Rogers property that was developed, you have the ones I already mentioned, the Fieldstone Place Condominiums, you have any number of properties that have been redeveloped along West Falmouth Highway, wherein multifamily has been allowed. And given the fact that we need as much rental housing as we can get, I don't see how this is any different. There was comments about the track record of the owner. The concerns have been expressed through the historical process and through this process, and those concerns have been addressed. So I think that the track record they're showing is they're showing that they're addressing the concerns that have been brought to them. The fence that was installed was approved by Historic. There was an agreement that was signed for that process by the Jessups and by the neighbors to the rear. That fence was selected with the input of the neighbors. So there was quite a bit of thought that went into that. It's not a stockade fence. Stockade fence have tips on the end. This is a flat fence. And it was approved by the Historical Commission. There's a question about the setbacks. The setback here is 25 feet. We are exceeding that. We're actually at 35 feet. The stone walls are staying.
Home base, the home contractors?
I mean, so...
Specifically, is it a home-based business there, or is it a contractor yard?
It's not... Certainly not a contractor yard, because there's no storage of materials. And if you've been to the property, that's been... And any debris that was on the site has been removed. And again, I would just say, you know, there was never a comment brought to the owners here that anyone had a concern or a problem with the property.
Question was, is there home-based?
I was told no. We have testimony that there is. It could be conditioned that there can be no home-based service businesses without approvals from the board. That would be in a perfectly appropriate condition for the board to place on this
You're allowed. Six units per acre in B3. You've got just over a half an acre there in B3. You've got three units. You can't have a duplex there.
So this is...
Even if we give you the back, because it straddles. I mean, you got away with the equivalent of the 10 units on an acre in the past, but Tophius B. Butler, I mean, you didn't even give us the square footage. So I'm just estimating that you're in the neighborhood of 22,000 square feet. That gives you three total units in the front. Can't have a duplex there.
So Tophius B. Butler is very clear that you can take into consideration the entirety of the lot, whether it's in the B3 zone or not, but you can only put the proposed use in the area that would allow it. So we have an existing nonconforming use. No one's touching that. But what we're proposing is a special permit use that's allowed within the B3. You're allowed to take into consideration the entirety of the 41,000 square feet. The Tophius case is...
But you can't... You're this... No. You got away with this once, but it's not the way it reads.
It's not getting away with it, Mr. Vannan.
You didn't even give us the square footage of the...
Because it doesn't matter.
Of the rest... Excuse me, I'm speaking. You don't have the square footage of the residential or the B3 district there. You are allowed six units per acre. You've got roughly a half an acre here, so you've got three units.
You take into consideration... The case is very clear that you take into consideration the entirety of the lot, whether it's in the zoning district or not.
But you can only have the... What's allowed in the B3.
That's not what the case says.
You got away with it once, but...
I'm not getting away with anything. I'm not getting away with anything. You're misinterpreting the case.
No, I'm not.
Respectfully, you are.
I don't believe so.
Because you'll notice...
And we went through this argument before, and I'm not...
Hey, you're not going to have... Excuse me.
We're going back and forth here. It's my...
I understand. I understand. You stated your position, that's fine. I don't want to have entertained debate about legal interpretation of this case.
I'm sorry. That's what this is, and that's my job.
I understand. You stated your position, you're against the project. Any follow-up questions?
Yeah. What's the square footage of the B3?
I don't... I didn't have the answer five minutes ago.
How come you're in here without it?
Because it doesn't matter, because you take into consideration the entire lot.
Not in my interpretation, and not in the proper interpretation.
Any other questions? Mr. Duffy?
I just would like some clarification, Mr. Clower, about the fence, which was put up yesterday. You said you got it approved by the Historical Commission, but it was just put up yesterday. So how did that happen?
Because Historical approved it some time ago.
Okay. But according to the plan that you submitted, it lies outside the historic district boundary. So...
So I believe... So I believe the fence starts... Let me see here if I can find a picture that shows it. The fence starts... Fence starts about here, which would still be within a historical district.
Okay. So part of it is within the historic district.
But there was a certificate of appropriateness for the fence.
Okay. Jared?
No further comment. No additional.
What are you doing about snow removal?
So I think the snow removal would be the same whether we have the duplex or not, because you have the...
Where's the snow going? Show me on the plan, please.
Jared, where'd you guys put the snow?
There's the other space right now.
Come on up. Come on up, please.
Jared Jagman, property manager. So on this space right now, generally, we push the snow up towards the grass between the buildings, if we have significant snowfall. Generally, it's pushed up against where the cars park if they're not there. If they are there, we generally push it up towards the lawn. And then on the top, we just generally push it. It's rocks, so we try not to dig it up. We generally just push it out of the way, just so cars can get out and back in.
Okay. I want that shown on the plan, please.
So it's right between the two buildings, so...
Yep. Just show it on the plan, Kevin, if you could.
So that's where the parking are.
So he's saying they generally put the snow in this area here, between the two buildings.
It's just pushed up where there's no cars. There's no entrance.
So that would be...
It's open the lawn.
That would be in this area here, Suzanne, between...
And what about the back, the gravel area?
Yeah, so that just gets pushed forward.
It gets pushed off the parking area.
Yeah.
Okay. And what... Enough of... I'm good on snow. Where do these people... Now, I'm looking at these pictures. I don't know if you need to look at them. Either one of you. Where do these six apartments put their storage?
So the new duplex is going to have storage.
Where's the guy that's not doing any irrigation with all the irrigation equipment, putting his stuff?
Yeah, he generally... He does not... He has a truck that has a...
So he keeps it on his truck?
Yeah, there's a... He has a personal truck that he's kept for years.
Okay, because I drive by here, and there's a lot of crap all over that yard.
Yeah.
Excuse my language, but like...
Yeah, on which side?
Practically all on the right, on the left.
I know he has a couple of kayaks, and he has like a riding... It's not a mower. It's like a cedar, something like that. You know, as far as I know, the individual that's been there, you know, is... He's lived there for...
That's the cleaned-up version.
Yeah, since...
That's the cleaned-up version.
Yeah, the other side was... There were some hoses. Well, the tarp... The tarp covers some kindling. There was a couple hoses and a gas can, and I think a recycling bin, general household items, other than a couple ladders.
And what do we do about the furniture restore equipment that's laying outside somewhere?
So as far as what that is, is it is a hobby. I think some of the items that she had refinished, basically sold to kind of recoup the cost. So there's no profit made. It's a hobby. So generally, and I think there's like four items that in the last...
Where are these chemicals being kept?
It's latex paint. So it's... There's not... It's latex paint. That's not a... There's no chemicals. It's generally stuff now is all latex.
And again, I'd be more than happy to have a condition that there be no home-based service businesses without appropriate approvals.
So these people are provided with zero storage?
There's minimal storage in both of... These buildings are older. So, and we would be glad to address any storage concerns and work with the Historical Commission to come up with something that's appropriate. But the new building is going to have some storage for the two new units. But outdoor storage, we'd be happy to... We have not touched that yet, because it's another historical aspect that we have not addressed yet.
You should touch on it, to be neighborly. I mean, it's not nice to live...
So, I mean, we... You know, there's no lot coverage issue here. There's nothing, you know, we'd be happy to put up...
Just living next to that, I would...
I do agree. As far as the storage, I would love to, you know, work with the neighbors and come up with some type of storage that works for everybody.
And how does the mail work with all this, and Amazon and all that? Do they drive right up in?
So generally, some packages are just thrown in the front apartment, just like anything, Amazon, that they generally, you know, they're not too keen. They usually leave them out in the front. Mailboxes, it all depends on what they feel like.
Do you have mailboxes?
We do have mailboxes, yes.
So the two units are going to have mailboxes?
Yes.
They're on.
Yep, yep.
The guy drives up or a human drives up and...
Yeah, it's... The mail goes up right in front of the stone wall.
Straightforward.
There'd be, you know, there'd be five total.
All right. Thank you, Emma.
I have just... Sometimes I need a little help. And tell me again, tell us again, which bylaw... Yes, I got it right here. Which bylaw allows you to put six units per acre in the B3 zone? Which one is that?
6.2B.
6.2B. And that's six units per acre. An acre is 43,560 square feet. This lot has...
41,000 and change.
So I'm not sure if this lot is even big enough to allow this combined.
We're only asking for five.
But you're splitting it now. Now you're saying, "I can have six units per acre, but if I have less than an acre, I can have just a few less units within that business zone." On 259, you were restricted because four units came right up against the B3 zone and couldn't extend into the residential B zone. I'm having a lot of trouble getting to yes on this, particularly because of Tophius V. Butler, and my... Again, I'm not an attorney, and I wish we had more time to consider this.
Wow. We could wait.
But, yeah. But I think that's a big question. I don't... Again, I'm not an attorney, but how can you do that, given that case, that says one has to be passive? And just because it exists today, why make it not more nonconforming?
So the fact it does exist today is the difference. So it's a pre-existing nonconforming use. I wouldn't propose that if this was new, but we're not touching the existing dwellings other than reduction of a unit within the front dwelling. Tophius V Butler says that you take into consideration the entirety of the lot.
I agree.
And it allows you to use what would be allowed in the appropriate zoning district, so we're proposing two new units within the business three district. Historically, what was done is, people would say, you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, such as a motel, for instance, and they would say, you'd apply for a special permit saying, we'd like to have multifamily housing, it's a different non-conforming use, but it's not substantially more detrimental. That's what historically what was done. This board has gotten away from that, we didn't apply under that provision, we're not asking for that, but that is how many of these projects have been approved, when there was a pre-existing non-conforming use that was altered to allow for the multifamily housing. Here, we have multifamily housing as the non-conforming use, what we're proposing is multifamily housing that would be allowed by the bylaw.
Thank you. Jerry, any questions?
I had a question, considering we have some legal debate, which we have no expertise on as a board, would you consider continuation so we could seek legal opinion from town council?
Absolutely, and I think...
And that's a suggestion to the rest of the board.
I think the board has sought the town council's opinion on this very question in the past.
And the town council agreed with me, and let me just read...
They didn't.
Let me just read this, this is from Tophius. "To the extent required to satisfy the dimensional requirements," that's where you're using the back, "such residential land cannot be subsequently built on or countered towards the lot coverage requirement of another structure, which is exactly what you're doing with the duplex. Therefore, you have somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-two thousand square feet, I would wager, in the B3 district, so you can have three units."
I don't have the case with me.
I have it right here.
I don't, that's an excerpt, I don't have the case.
Right, no.
And I've quoted you from the case in the past, the line that says exactly what I'm suggesting it says.
I just quoted you right from it, and it doesn't say what you said.
You have, you have a paragraph excerpt, no, because they didn't, because...
Well, you agreed, yes, he did.
Mr. Chair, could we rein this in?
You weren't there.
Mr. Duffy, you have a question?
Not so much a question, but I think we have a problem here, because there's already buildings on the property, and I would tell you that this property could not be built today under the zoning bylaw, it just could not be, but it's there, so we have to deal with it. So we have a little different situation than we've been dealing with previously, so I think Mr. Patamas' suggestion, we stop tonight, seek the opinion of town council with the respect to this particular project and this Tophius versus Butler question, come back, and then we'll all know, we'll all be on the same page, and we can talk about it appropriately.
I absolutely agree, the only other thing I'm gonna add to this is to have some discussion if there are other issues, because it may not be necessary if there's a significant number of people who are opposed to the project that's presented. So I'd just like to have a few minutes of discussion amongst the board if they have issues or concerns, or where they are with the thought process.
I give you the unit because it straddles, but I still don't see the fourth unit in the front. Other than that, he's got the setbacks, they're all there, but you're, in effect, what you're doing here is putting eight units on an acre, if you do the math, and that's not legal.
How do you get eight?
Because the B3 district is only about a half an acre, and that applies, you can only have, it's right there, in Tophius.
Think we're going backwards again?
No, we're not.
New issue, I thought he asked for.
Well, no, but that question will be answered.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, but I don't have anything else, other than that. I mean, you know, he's got the setbacks, he's there, but you can't put eight units on an acre, only six.
Jerry, your thoughts?
No, thank you, while I'm ahead.
No, I think that, you know, we're at the point tonight, we're not gonna get anywhere, so let's get the answer to the question that's gonna, that a couple of our members have, and then we'll go from there.
Suzanne?
Kevin, I have another question, did Historical ask you to fix that wall?
No.
Okay.
Sorry?
I presented my concerns, thank you.
So, obviously people can get a continuance, where are we? Norine?
We have the next meeting on October 5th, that's probably over weeks of driving, I recommend October 19th.
Suggestion to continue to October 19th, is there a motion?
Let's ask Kevin.
Is she available that evening, Mr. Clower?
I'm just looking at my, I'm gonna, I'll be here.
Frank, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fineran, discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, continue to October 19th.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time on this tonight.
Includes our new hearing list under open meeting, we're gonna be tabling the minutes of August 24th and September the 7th. Is there any board discussion?
Table away, we don't need a bump on that.
No, board updates, there was an email that went out, just to make sure everyone got it, Percival is now staked, so that can be walked if need be by members of the board. 10:28 will be the board Saturday working retreat, between now and a week or so before, if there are specific things that the board wants to discuss at the retreat.
How about the menu?
Get the list in, and yes, we'll put a list out as to who's bringing what, so we don't all show up with blueberry muffins.
I got coffee.
I was gonna bring...
Favorite recipe from Dunkin' Donuts.
Future agenda items?
We spoke about revisions to the bylaws from the planning board, and actually, I was driving and looking at the paper, but I thought I saw a notice that they're having a hearing, we were supposed to have a copy of those changes emailed to us, or whatever, but when is that?
October 5th, is it? Is that the right date?
That can't be, that's our meeting, and we have a meeting on the 5th, so it can't be the planning board, they're on Wednesday.
We meet on the 5th.
So, maybe it was a bump. Can we find that out, and when you email us the changes, we can, we'll know the date as well? Because I suppose, in lieu of doing it here, I mean, we, at least, I'm interested, I'd like to go and...
If you could just notify the board, Norine, as to when the meeting is, just let people know.
And any advance copy of the document?
That was in the paper, but reading it out of the papers.
Norine, I have a question, I watched the planning board last night, and they handed out a sheet of affordable units.
And I think I saw that notice, I can't be a hundred percent sure, Frank.
Would you grab Jed and grab a copy of that, for all of us?
So, the housing committee has a website, and it's all posted there.
Oh, it's on there?
It's all posted there.
Oh, Jed just presented it last night to the planning board, so it's already on the thing? It was Jed's.
The current SHI is on the website.
Okay.
So the housing person recently had a website added for them, and they posted it there.
The same thing I saw last night? Okay.
Any other future agenda items?
Today, Ashley, you sent an email out with some letters from the lady who sent them in at the last minute, and I can't open them, what's different about those than the others, which I can open?
Yeah, one was weird, I had one that came out weird, but I could still read it, but it was strange.
Oh, the one with the click-on thing, yeah, one of them worked for me, and the other one didn't.
Which browser are you using? Are you using Microsoft, are you using Google, or sometimes it's just that?
I use Chrome, whatever that is.
Okay.
There's a plus sign sometimes on the bottom, Ashley pointed it out to me, that you can make it bigger.
There's also sometimes that you click on it, and then there's, it downloads, either at the bottom of your screen, or the top, when you have to click on it.
Right, but it didn't happen.
Yeah, that's what I have to do, exactly.
I set it differently, so...
She made a note if you don't get it, um...
Is it something you do, or is it something, is it the way you receive it?
It's voodoo.
No, it's the way she receives it.
Be mine.
Good answer.
Any other future agenda items? All right, our next meeting's October 5th, 2023 here, 6:30 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room, we are adjourned.